Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont. Village Board meeting for September 21st, 2009. I'd like to call on our clerk to take the roll call, please.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Acting Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief King?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball? Village Planner Malik? Human Resource Administrator Casey.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on our agenda are the minutes of the committee at the Hall Meeting held September 3rd and Board Meeting September 8th, 2008.
Motion to approve is corrected.
Second?
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call our Fire Chief Frank Trout up to the podium for another special presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. Tonight, it's my honor to bring our deputy, Deputy Fire Chief Dave Weiss, before us. Dave Weiss has completed the Chief Fire Officer course. And Deputy Chief Dave Weiss is a member of the Westmont Fire Department, and he has successfully completed the process that awards him the professional designation of Chief Fire Officer, CFO. The Commission on Professional Accreditations met on March 9th to officially confer the redesignation of Chief Fire Officer to Deputy Chief Dave Weiss. Chief Weiss is one of only 630 CFOs worldwide. The Chief Fire Officer Designated Program is a voluntary program designed to recognize individuals who demonstrate their excellence in several measured components, including expertise, education, professional development, professional contributions, associations, community involvement, and technical competencies. Chief Weiss received his original designation on March 1st of 2000. To maintain the designation, individuals need to show they have continued to develop as a CFO in four areas: professional development, professional contributions, active association memberships, and community involvement. A board of reviews consisting of members of the fire and emergency service profession, academia, and municipal agencies review the applicants and recommend successful candidates to, for the position of designated fire officer. Chief Weiss has been a member of the Westmont Fire Department for 19 years. He's done an outstanding service to the village and to the department, and he's held in very high esteem. Dave?
So what do we call him now? What do we call him?
Chief?
No, he's deputy chief. Nobody's the chief.
We offered an opportunity for Dave to make a few words that he...
Yes.
He had to make a few words.
Make a few words. Awesome.
Thank you very much, and thanks all the fire service personnel that came in this evening to support you, Dave. Thank you, Chief Trout. Moving right along, we have two students in the back, which Trustee Seneca has been kind enough to go back and get their names and find out why they've been hanging around here at our village meetings, and they, I'm sure, could find a lot better things to do than sit in on village board meetings. But these are two young men from Hinsdale Central High School, Brad and Jeff Summerfield. And they are both residents of the village of Westmont, but do attend Hinsdale Central for their class entitled Government and Politics. So, welcome, and I hope that you have gotten a chance to see how village government works, and what a wonderful village board that we have here in Westmont, and how cooperatively we work together to solve all of our problems and continue to move our village forward. So, thank you for being here.
Is this a dare?
And the next thing I would like to do is bring up the names for consideration for the Citizens Finance Planning Committee. And once you have an ordinance in front of you that John Zemanek, our attorney, put together a description, but basically, this is a group of individuals from, professionals from across the village, including one member from the staff of the village. And their purpose will be to volunteer over what we hope will be a six-month period and report back to us. And in simple terms, the object is to look at the village and how it operates, the funding of the village. They will start out by having their first meeting with our finance director, and just having an opportunity to meet all of the other department personnel. And the final objective is, will they, or could they, or can they come up with ways to save the village money? Perhaps ways that we haven't seen as a board, ways our staff has not seen. But this is similar to a committee that we had a number of years ago. So, in a nutshell, that's the purpose that I would like to see for this committee. So, with that being said, you have any questions from board members? I would like to move ahead with this.
I would just like to make a comment. The last time we had a similar committee, you know, so many good things came out of it, and I think really the best thing that came out of it was that it gave our citizens a chance to participate firsthand, even though it's sort of an advisory committee. It's not really a committee that's going to make decisions. They're kind of looking at things from a different angle than we, as a board, look. And sometimes, you know, we can't see the forest through the trees, so I think it's really good. And I just want to say thank you for doing this committee, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to vote on it and to accept your recommendations, because I know it's not necessarily required. And I, for one, really appreciate it. So, thank you. I'm excited about it.
This is on the agenda. It's item number 11 for the board vote as well.
Okay.
If you want comments at that time also.
I just have one question. I'm not trying to be a jerk, but Section 5, where it says "all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict," well, Section 4 gives the Ad-Hoc Finance Committee the power to analyze the trends and make recommendations. Does that, because of Section 5, repealing everything else, take the powers away from Lisa's office to do the same thing?
No. You know, that's the standard language we put in every ordinance, that if there's a specific ordinance, I don't know that her job is as a committee. You know, she's not a committee, she's an individual.
But her job is to, you know, her department's job is to make those recommendations to the board and such. I'm just a little leery about repealing anything that, where Lisa's department does the same thing as what this ad hoc committee will do, just from different standpoints and all that.
I'm not sure that actually this kind of stuff is spelled out in the ordinance that relates to the finance director. It's certainly in the job description for the finance director, but I don't know if it contains this kind of detail.
Okay, just checking, because I, you know...
Sure. It's good to be surprised.
The way I interpret it is if there was created in the past another ad hoc finance committee or similar committee whose job was to do this, and that conflicts with this ordinance, you know, this ordinance would prevail.
Right.
I think, I guess, common ordinance interpretation would say, you know, that those are compatible positions, and it's not meant to eliminate the finance director's job. But if the majority of the board wants that clarified, that gets an easy clarification, if you feel more comfortable.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, well...
On the ordinance, we can talk about it maybe more when this comes up as the agenda item, but I can explain some of the reasons why I put some language in there, because it wasn't discussed Thursday in detail. And I'm open to any suggestions the mayor or the board may have when this item comes up.
Very good. Sounds good.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Okay, moving right along, our village clerk.
I have nothing tonight, here.
Our village attorney.
I've got nothing tonight.
Ron Searle, our village manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I wanted to request an executive session on personnel. And the other thing is, passed out a copy of the video gaming survey. We had distributed last week a draft, I think electronically, for board members to look at, and this is the final version that is now up on our website. We've got a press release up there promoting it. The other part of the board's direction to gain public input on this includes the acting chief surveying the existing liquor license holders, and I believe that letter's gone out to all of them. Those responses are due by the end of this month. Now, we didn't put a hard and fast deadline on this survey. You know, we could possibly be ready to bring this back at the committee hall on the 1st, but I wanted to get some idea from the board, if you felt strongly we wanted to bring it back that quickly, or could we wait until the next committee hall and set of meetings in October?
I think that's fine.
And we have more responses.
I think that's fine.
There are some other communities that have already opted out. I saw an article today, the city of Naperville, I believe, is the most recent one that I've read about. Okay, so we'll plan on the second set of meetings in October to bring this back to the board agenda. That's all I have.
We also, I forgot to request an executive session after this meeting regarding personnel. Did you?
I did.
Did you bring that up?
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Ron? Moving right along, new business. 37 West Quincy, migraine addict. Board to consider an ordinance approving a special use permit and a development permit to operate a secondhand consignment shop in the B1 limited business district.
So moved.
Discussion?
Just to note that I did include as a special condition that either the applicant and/or the landlord has to either remove or replace that light above Unit A, which you mentioned. And also, I think this is implied in the definition of what a resale consignment shop is, but they're prohibited from operating rummage sale business or thrift shop, because this was recently recategorized as a definition in use within the B1 district.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Next item, Cairo One Wellness Centers. Board to consider motion approving a request from Mr. Dennis Jean-Pierre of the Cairo One Wellness Centers to distribute health and fitness flyers at the Westmont Train Depot.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
No.
Trustee Forsley?
No.
Trustee Scott?
No.
Trustee Fleming?
No.
Trustee Klebeneau?
No.
Trustee Seneca?
No.
Next item, School District 201 Employee Parking. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with School District 201 concerning employee parking and shared parking lot on Linden Avenue.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? There are no discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Downtown Employee Parking Permits. Board to consider an ordinance creating parking permits and designating parking areas for downtown business employees at a nominal cost to such employees.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Yep.
I, I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I know we all received an email, which really, I thought some points were well-made. I personally lost sight of the fact, and even though Fred reiterated it, that there's plenty of free parking. It's just not the prime close parking that we're talking about permitting. The other thing is, we've been, you know, for a long time, we've been talking about starting a parking fund, which is actually our next agenda item. And while it would be a small fund, I do think we need to revisit charging a fee. I don't think it should be $45 a quarter. I think it should be something far more reasonable, but I think it should be more than just our expense. Now, whether or not the building, you know, maybe the business owner picks up the cost for their employees. And if they don't want to pick up the cost, then maybe the employee, you know, that would be their choice then to buy one. The other thing that I'm having trouble with, and I wanted to call our acting chief today and never got around to it. I heard a lot of discussion about how unsafe it is in the alley, and I wondered, like, what kinds of calls we've had there? What kinds of issues have come up? Because I honestly think it's more perception than actuality. I don't think it's unsafe. I mean, I've driven through there, and, you know, sure, you see people out smoking, you know, from the bar, but have we had issues? Have we had police calls, assaults, robberies?
It's more of a public nuisance, some calls.
But it's not really...
Totally conduct-type calls, intoxicated persons walking up and down the alley. In talking to one business owner, I spent an hour with her on Thursday evening. Her concern is the panhandlers coming up, approaching her, asking time schedules for their trains, when obviously they aren't taking the train, coming up for, "Do you have a dollar for this, or a dollar for that?" No major criminal activity. We've had some, and we're addressing it.
Okay, so we get calls on that, and then we address it, right?
We're in the process of addressing it. We have a meeting Thursday morning with the business people who have any other concerns that they may have, 8 o'clock, before they open their businesses. So, we're going to be meeting with them. If anything else that we do to address the department, we will do so. As far as major crimes, no, such as robberies. Minor, maybe thefts of bikes and stuff like that, but no major robberies, no major crime in the alleys.
Okay, so probably no different than any place else? Any other alley?
No. And again, talking with the one business owner, her concern was, when she said things on being safe, she meant more on lighting issues. She felt a little unsafe on...
And that's really a building owner issue, isn't it?
Well, in her areas where she parks her car, where she parks her car, she'd like to see better lighting east of CAS on Burlington. As far as why she would not park her car over here in this area, she was concerned, as she stated here the other night, vehicle putting stuff on top of their cars, putting their briefcases, while they're getting their keys on other people's vehicles, and she didn't want to subject her property to that. As far as overall unsafeness, it was much more, the way we took it was the panhandlers and the lighting, not so much that the area was unsafe.
Okay, thank you. You know, just for me, the more I think about it, this has been something that we've been addressing for a long, long time. You know, we spent the money on the study. We basically found that it's not a case of not having enough parking spots at this time, but it's who's parking where and their usage. So, if we can encourage, and we all agree, if we can encourage employees to park away from the prime areas and leave those for patrons, that would be our ultimate goal. I don't know, you know, looking at other towns and, and I just, I really think we need to give this more consideration.
One of the things I had with the lighting, my concern is, usually when there's a business that has a parking, employee parking or customer parking, we demand a certain type of lighting to illuminate the area. And it seems like we don't have that restriction for the back alley area of those businesses, and it's maybe something that we should look into. Lighting it up may make it a little bit more difficult for certain things to be happening, and may make the employees feel safe. Some of those businesses probably do light up their own for their own employees, but I think maybe if some are fairly dark, maybe we better look and see if we shouldn't change our ordinances or change something, and ask that they have to illuminate it a certain amount, just like we would in any parking facility that we have.
I can tell you right now, those alleys are better lit than the street I live on.
Well, I know they are, because I went down it, and it's a lot lighter than your street is.
My street is darker than that alley.
It's a lot lighter.
I agree with Trustee Seneca for that reason and for another reason that we need to take another look at this. I talked to some business owners after our meeting, and I wish I had known this before the meeting, because I would certainly have addressed it. Apparently, there are a number of business owners on CAS that rent out their spaces behind their businesses to commuter parking, and then they park in front of other businesses. And when those businesses call the police department, when they're responded to, and they put chalk on the tires, then they move the car down two spaces or in front of someone else's business for the rest of the day. You know, that's kind of, that's nonsense. That's playing games. And I don't, you know, I was told examples of who does it, and if it's true, they were sitting in here last Thursday night. So, that's just in addition to what you said. I agree with you. I think, I'd like to take another look at this.
Well, I think the other thing that we have to do to make them understand, and I'm not saying make them, I shouldn't use that word, but they're all in agreement that, yeah, we're going to do this, and, you know, we'll monitor it or whatever. Okay, that's fine. But I think, I think a nominal cost of, I agree, not $45. Maybe you start with $10, you start with $15. But, here's the thing that needs to be done, as far as I'm concerned. Instead of saying to the business owner, "Well, how many tags do you need?" No, 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 no. If you're going to have a hanging tag, which makes it easier for the police department to see it in the car, several things, which I don't think is against the law, but I'll ask anyway. You ask for a description, make and model of the vehicle, and you ask for the license plate number of the car. And that's what the tag gets assigned to, that hangs in the window. That way, it can't be taken and moved from one vehicle to another. You're able to track this vehicle and find out where it is. I mean, you're not asking for anything more than what you would ask in commuter parking or any other, any other rental parking.
A really good point. In the commuter parking, we don't have to identify our car. It goes to our address. So, if I take my husband's car, I just, you know, it is one allocated car.
Right.
You know, we can't both park at the lot.
Right.
So, I think it would be a little difficult, you know, if employees are bringing in, you know, a different car from home or whatever, but they can also register two cars, but it's one permit.
Right. But, I mean, you have to have, you have to have that check and balance to make sure that they're not just taking, "Well, I've got 15 employees. Give me 15 tags." No, no, no.
Well, they won't buy as many as they want.
Well, they can buy as many as they want. It doesn't matter.
They're not going to buy more than they need.
But you have to have, you have to have a check and balance as to that tag going to that vehicle, not to where it could be just handed around to whoever. I mean, I, you know...
And I'm just, I'm still, and I know that the DWBA and the chamber and certainly staff, we've done a really good job, I think, of communicating that we did this parking study, and we had the meetings. But, you know, when I think of a business like Amber, who probably brings more revenue in than most of the businesses on CAS, and we didn't really hear from them, now, does that mean that they are against it? Does that mean they're for it? What about the sushi place? What about the nail place next door? What about the other 70 businesses in the B1? You know, what about Nature's Best? Where do his employees park? He owns a lot, so it's a little different situation, but I just, I almost feel like, personally, for me, I acted way too soon, and I lost sight of the fact that there's plenty of parking. It's just, if you, you know, if you want the convenience of being in one of these identified areas that's closer to the downtown, well, then there's a fee associated with that. Whether your employer picks it up or you pick it up, there's some sort of a fee. And $45 in this economy, to me, is too high. You know, maybe it's 25, maybe it's 30, maybe it's 10, 15, whatever it is. But I do think it should be more than just covering our expenses.
Well, and the other thing is, too, I did hear through the grapevine that some of the business owners downtown were trying to communicate with the other business owners that didn't have parking behind their facilities, that they would share their parking behind their facilities, and it fell on deaf ears. It's like, you know, we have, we've tussled with this, and we've gone back and forth. I mean, it's like I said, it goes back to the Main Street days when this first came about. Granted, yeah, we've got some empty spaces in this town right now, and sure, we do. I mean, the economy dictates what it is. But, the other side that we have to look at, too, is we need to be ready for when the economy does turn the other way, and we start rolling some other people in here. You know, it might also help that if some of our business owners had some ideas or friends who were thinking about opening a business, hey, you know, why don't you check out Westmont, see what's going on? I mean, as a village entity, we can only do so much. And I mean, I mean, Larry, at the chamber, I mean, I'm sure you get people that from time to time are looking for someplace else to move to. But, I don't think it's something that we should, we should back off anymore. I think we ought to come to a decision what we want to charge tonight, pass it, and, you know, put the addendums to it or whatever we need to do, and let's get it going. I mean, I think it's just been drug out too long. I think it's time to act on it.
See, I'm not comfortable with coming up with, I would be more comfortable with postponing it. And the reason is, we sat here, and we all said no with people out there, and now there's no people out there, and we changed our minds, and nobody gets a chance to speak on it, which, you know, I would rather postpone it, and I agree with Trustee Seneca and what everybody's saying right now. And that's why I brought up, do you charge the business owner $100 or whatever? And he gets the permit.
Maybe it's a flat fee, maybe it's a year, or whatever.
Maybe it's a flat fee, I don't know. Maybe if it's a smaller business, I don't know how he'd come up with the money, but figure out something. But I don't, I don't feel comfortable with just, all of a sudden, on Thursday, saying one thing, and then Monday, saying something else and voting on it without giving people an opportunity to speak one more time.
Well, if that's the case, that's fine. I agree with that. But I would not want to see this postponed any longer than, say, the second meeting in October. I'd prefer to see it on the 1st of October.
Well, I do, I...
Oh, I would prefer the next meeting.
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
It just, I mean, you know, fine.
Yeah.
If they want to come in, but the other thing that I think they need to understand is, too, as a board and elected officials, sometimes, you know, we have, we have lives, too, outside of what we do here, and, I mean, we read as much as we can, but over a weekend, there's been a lot of times that we've gone back and researched and looked at our notes, or gone back over it, or whatever, and have come back in on Monday with a different attitude than what we left here on Thursday night with.
That's true.
And, I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as letting them come back in and talk again, but honestly, again, but honestly, and that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but you're going to hear the same rhetoric that you heard Thursday night. If, if everybody wants to listen to that again, that's fine. And I'm an advocate of the downtown, and I believe in the downtown. That's fine. I mean, you have, you have some people, I feel, that don't want to see any change and want it the way it used to be and all this other stuff. And it's like, well, you know what? Sorry, we have the name Progressive in front of our village for a reason. And it's up to us to take that and be proactive moving forward. But I don't have a problem postponing it to the next meeting. I just, I, I think we, I think as we're sitting here tonight, we ought to come up with some kind of a dollar amount though.
I agree.
Going into it. You know, make it move faster.
Can I ask a question? Fred? There's plenty of free parking. Where?
Behind a lot of the businesses. They, they can park for free behind their own business.
If they have the spot.
Yeah, there's parking on, on a, on all public streets, and you can park there for up to how many hours? Four hours?
So a person working eight hours has to leave his employment to go move his car somewhere else?
Maybe for a lunch hour.
I don't know if I'd give that as free parking then, because then all of a sudden, you're right, you're letting them leave on their, at the lunch hour, depending on when they get there. So it's not convenient for employees to go move their car, which they may have to now move it a half a block or a block away, depending on how many other employees are doing the same thing. It's not like they've got a lot that can go in there and park for the whole day, which is free. Then I'll ask, the next question is, how many businesses do we have downtown? Ballpark? How many were included in this or responded?
I think there was, that was actually part of the challenge. We had probably about fifteen that responded. Another part of the challenge was some waiting until after the deadline to respond.
There was a few. But we, we could say three quarters of the downtown didn't respond.
Well, I think part of the challenges, part of the challenges, the reason there wasn't a response from forty or fifty merchants is because really this issue has an impact on a small geographical part of downtown. So you're going to have a lot of merchants who are looking at this saying, well, this isn't really an issue that impacts my daily business.
Not yet.
And, not yet. I agree with you, because I think long-term, it has an impact on each and every business in a downtown B1 district. But they're looking at this and saying, well, it's not my battle. I'm fine where I'm at and let those who have a, an issue with it right now take care of it. And that's why I believe we didn't get a response from thirty, forty, fifty merchants.
I agree. I, I think it was Ellen. I have an issue with somebody who rents out his place or their place.
Yep.
And then, you know. And I don't know how many of those there are. There could be more than one or two, but the object is that that's not really playing fair at that point.
No, it's not.
It's hard to police.
Oh, absolutely.
Very difficult.
Especially for what I hear they're charged.
Your honor, there was enough. Before we discuss amounts.
How do we come up with the forty-five? How, how did that number?
Well, that was, I guess, a recommendation of the task force. When we put the group together, trustee, that the Downtown Alliance Task Force, we talked about a number of things. Should it be the same amount as a commuter permit? And they said, well, that's a little bit too high. What if we started a little bit lower and we went forty-five dollars a quarter?
Which is fifteen a month.
And you get, then you realize it's not so much, because that's like fifty cents a
day.
Well, but see, I, that's where I have the trouble is.
Yeah, it costs more in a meter.
Is having the, the employee pay that. And that's why I said, does the employer recharge the business? I mean, who benefits this whole project? Who's going to benefit? Well, hopefully the, the village will with the taxes and stuff. But who's going to benefit if we get more customers into the community and more, you know, consumers in their, in downtown? The businesses benefit. Now, will they, are they going to pay their employers more money? Their employees more money?
No.
You know, so we're asking the employee to pay, but who's going to get the, who's the benefactor of this parking?
Well, there won't be any benefactor for ten or twenty years. Long-term. That's what it is. I guess the other thing is, can the police police this? We're five down.
That's right.
Is it conceivable that this is going to be monitored the way it probably should for it to work?
I've had discussion with business owners, John Fleming, from actually delicious, in particular, when this issue came in front of the board several months ago. And the, the answer, direct answer is no. We cannot do this, you know, seven days a week, you know, eight hours or twelve hours a day without the downtown policing officer. It's hard. Our officers tried when they did a survey to do the chalking of the tires, and they get, they get pulled away with calls, they get pulled away with the rest, they get back, they don't have time to complete it, they don't have time to relay the information to another officer. So our solution, recommendation at this time is that we will do it on a one day a week rotating day, so the employees will not know one day that is. We will hit that, you know, in the enforcement of the zones, hot and heavy, and on the other days as much as we can. If it's a slow day and the officers can do it, great. But, you know, one day a week will be dedicated, and that day will rotate, because is this the day that I'm, you know, I should park here or not? They don't know if the officers are coming. The other issue was, is we told many business owners that if you see a car that's in violation, there was one business that told me there's a Cadillac that parks in the commuter lot every day, and it parks there for, it's either a commuter or it's another. Well, call us and let us know. They called and we can address it. An individual bus, we can address that, but to do the whole area gets a little bit hard, as you mentioned, with the manpower. So the optimal way would be, yes, with a downtown community policing officer again, but we don't have that luxury. So we will do with what, you know, we can with those two recommendations.
I think one other issue we have to really consider is what's going on behind the uptown also. If it's perception or it's not, I wouldn't want my wife walking down that alley. And I don't think any woman on this board would walk down that alley at ten-thirty or eleven o'clock at night, not, not knowingly or wanting to go.
If, if there's really a problem with people, I mean, don't we have a, don't we have an ordinance against, I, I've seen it, I've seen signs. In fact, I always chuckle when I go to the bank, because it's like no skateboarding, no standing, no this, no that. You know, there's like twenty things you can't do, and it's on a sign. So if, you know, why don't we enforce it? Why don't we move those, and again, I know it's, you can't be there twenty-four hours a day, but maybe some signage and start ticketing and.
When, when we're done with our executive session, why don't we take a walk over? By that time, it'll be ten-ish.
Yeah.
Let's walk over.
Yeah, I'll go.
Maybe it'll be eleven-thirty.
It might be midnight.
You're not going to stop, are you?
Maybe.
Just so you know, we, just recently complaints were brought to the police department's attention. We are addressing those complaints. Sergeant Thompson is my, the night shift supervisor who's assigned to be the point man, point officer in this, the problems in this area. He's coming up with a plan. He's going to how to address the problems. First of all, are there problems?
Excellent.
There are some, yes, but we are addressing it. I don't want to go into details of how we're addressing it, but just suffice it to say the police department is looking into it.
It's almost like that's a whole different issue.
It is, because it's a separate area, and that was why Fred and I came to the podium. I think trustee Clevenell mentioned the lighting. Every year in advance of the Taste of Westmont, I send out a letter to all the businesses reminding them that they must have exterior lighting.
One, minimum one hundred bulb over their back door. Now, we can get into a discussion, and Tom and I have talked about this, about, you know, do we want to require higher intensity lamps there? Well, I'm kind of in favor of that, but if I own a house right directly behind that off of the alley, then I don't know if I'm in favor of it so much. You know, at eleven o'clock at night, do I want to have a bright streetlight type fixture shining in my bedroom window? Now, we can be very careful and ensure shielding, you know, around those lights to make sure that they don't, you know, encroach into somebody else's dark space at night, you know.
So what we did is we had the officers in that district on the night shift, they drove around, identified all the businesses. Every business letter got a, every business in the downtown district got a letter. Those we found with burnt out lights got a reminder, and we asked them again to make sure the lighting. The officers made sure that the alley lights were lit up as well, too. So that'll be something that Sergeant Thompson and the shift officers do again.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the item on fees.
I don't know. Do we have the capability of saying that the employer has to pay the fees, or does that overstep our bounds?
See, I'm not, as I said, I'm not a business owner. I don't know how they would look at that and, you know.
Well, or, or maybe we simply say, this is the fee. And some businesses might ante up and say, you know what, these employees are important to me. I want them to continue to work. I want them to be at work on time. I'll pay it. And others might say, I'm not paying it. It's their problem. And, you know.
Yeah.
There might be some of each. I'll defer to John, but I don't think we can, I don't think we can mandate the owner. It follows the car. If they want to volunteer to pay it, so much the better, but I don't think we can force them. What do you think?
I agree. I think it's unanimously that with the survey that was done by the village, you'll find that it's an employee-based fee, and it's up to the employer as one of their benefits, whether or not they want to pay that.
Do they have to identify the business that they're getting the permit for with?
Good idea. They should.
Yeah, I would say.
I think they should, you know, and, and that raises the question whether the businesses have to cooperate by providing a list of employees, or whether the employee comes in and has to provide some proof of employment. You know, how detailed do you want to get?
Yeah, well, you know, and I think Lee might have made the point, you know, you don't want a business to, you know, that has three employees to buy fifteen of them and then resell them to commuters.
I was just going to say, in deference to my.
You know, I don't think anybody would. I don't mean to imply that they would. But down the road, somebody might. You never know.
But that's why you registered the car, which was trustee Fleming's point. I will say that the ordinance now requires a current pay stub or a written letter on, letterhead from the employer requesting the permit. So there has to be some proof that they are gainfully employed. And then if you double check that with the car registration requirement, hopefully you do away with the selling of permits, the black market permits.
I guess I, I have a question. Now, they, we used to allow them to park in the parking lot. We gave them like a pass for free, correct? For that big parking lot on the corner? We allowed so many. One of my thoughts was, if somebody wants to park closer, we could still, we could rent the front row out at a higher price. We'll see how badly they want to pay, so they don't have to walk down. I just thought to walk away from where they used to just cross the street, not free. Now we're sending them a block down or wherever it is, you know, we're sending them to pay for it. It just seemed kind of strange. Why would I pay for something I just had very convenient parking free?
When we offered them, when, we used to make them pay for them to park there.
Okay.
Nobody bought them. Nobody parked there. They parked other places.
Well, if they know they have to go down.
When they were free, they went in.
We could keep a cheap price down further where they have to walk it and more expensive prices if they want the convenience.
The only thing I'm thinking about that is if we, even if we did like five or six spaces and said, okay, you know, these are premium spaces, they cost more, if nobody buys them or nobody uses them, then we still have the issue we have today. We have customers of our local businesses parking farther away, the lot full and empty spaces.
Well, no, if they don't buy them, then it's just five more lots for the customers. But I'm just saying, we gave them the option of either paying the forty-five or fifty, whatever you think the price would be for that lot, and just a handful, maybe half a dozen. Otherwise, go down the street, walk a block further, you know, and, and save money, cheaper parking.
I know, but we don't want it to become an administrative nightmare either. I, you know, I could see, I could, I like the concept, but I just don't know how we'd administrate something.
I, I think, I think that corner lot needs to be a public lot, public lot only. I don't care if they want to give us a thousand dollars a month. It's a public lot for consumers.
Thousand, well, we reconsider it.
Thousand dollars, I might think about that.
Nobody, nobody's going, nobody's going to give you twenty-five. So it's, it's kind of a moot point. And I mean, it's, no, I mean, granted, you know, and everybody always will throw the thing, well, you go to a mall, you'll walk whatever. Well, but everybody who comes to a downtown wants to be able to get out and go into a store right away. Well, if you don't have the consumers able to park close to your business to go in and buy your goods, then your business is going to tail down, and then you get the complaints. So what's the village doing for us to get our businesses going? Well, market your business. I know that you're, they're all small business owners, and I understand it and I appreciate that. But at least give the consumers the accessibility to get in your door.
Especially, well, especially like in inclement weather.
Yeah.
I mean, I can tell you, I hate to even admit it, but I've, you know, we've changed plans when the weather was bad to not eat in Westmont and to go, you know, elsewhere, because we didn't want to have to walk a block. We've done it. I've done it in Wheaton, I've done it, I've done it everywhere where I can't find parking. That's a valid point.
Fred, what's happened with the tune lot? Is that included in, or I can't remember?
I thought we had a tune lot.
That was one of the recommendations, trustee, from the downtown task force, was that that lot also be relegated to consumer parking rather than employee parking. And that's why we came up.
That's got a timeframe on it, too?
Uh, yeah, I believe that's four hours also, isn't it, Tom? Or two hours in the tune lot?
Okay.
Okay. I mean, the Cass and Irving lot.
That, that was one of the things, one of the business owners had asked to, is, is there a chance we could push from two to three hours only that somebody could be going to one business such as visiting maybe an Edward Jones or the dentist. So it might be an hour appointment, but then they would sure like to be able to go maybe and have some time to go out and have something to eat maybe at that time, or do a little shopping. And if they've used half their time just in one place, they find it difficult, they have to go and move their car. And that was a thought I was going to bring up, that if, if we thought the three hour might work a little better and keep people downtown a little longer, our customers, I mean, once they move their car, they're out of here. So it's a thought that one of the businesses had brought up that I'd mentioned.
Is the street parking.
It's a strange, a strange phenomenon. People will, we will walk two blocks or more to go to a shopping center, Yorktown, Oakbrook. But people will not do that for downtown central business. Some people will not do that for downtown central business district parking. They can't park in or, or near it. They won't, they won't go to the business. It's, it's, it's always been that way. I mean, and some people will.
The walks never helped me.
I mean, I, when I go to a, a business downtown, especially a restaurant at night, I try to park out of the way, give that space to another person in the community. But, you know, some people just don't.
It's never stopped me. What stopped me is waiting lines. When you go up and they take your name, and you may have to wait twenty minutes or half an hour now. Then I will walk out and say, I'll find something. But no.
If the weather's bad, I don't like to walk.
I don't take up any space downtown, because I just walk. If it's not dark, I won't walk Lincoln Street at night.
I, I walk our streets at night.
Your honor.
What kind of money are we talking here? Back on track. We, we can't charge the owner. Is that, I, okay, so that, that's out. My idea's gone. So then, no, that's fine. So then we charge the employee, and if the owner wants to pick up the cost, that's, that would be their choice. And we thought forty-five dollars a quarter was too much, a hundred eighty a year is too much. So what kind of number?
Well, trustee, when the staff had some discussions with clerk Simski and her staff over the weekend, we were saying, you know, what, what would be a nominal cost that would cover the cost of, you know, the manpower and ordering the stickers and the hangers and that sort of thing? We kind of came up with ten dollars a quarter. So we thought if there's, you know, if that's two, if that's the nominal charge that reflects staff cost in forty-five, we've got a range between ten and forty-five dollars that.
Split the difference.
Yeah, that works.
The commuter lighting, for those of you who don't know, is, it went up about a year ago from sixty-five to seventy-five dollars, and we always look at it as twenty-five dollars a month. So if we did, you know, ten dollars a month to park down.
It'd be thirty.
Yes, it'd be thirty. But that, I think that's still high. So, and I would keep it on a quarter basis because turnover is pretty, pretty rampant. But I think.
Twenty a quarter.
Twenty a quarter.
Done? I can live with him.
Got to start somewhere.
And reevaluate it in six, uh, year, six months to a year and see what's going?
Talking twenty, twenty-five?
I could go twenty-five, but.
Twenty-five? Twenty-five, twenty-one?
I, I really, I kind of liked thirty, but, but I'm, I'm.
Twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five.
I think I could live with twenty. I could certainly live with twenty-five.
It gives them twenty off from where it was.
I think. Sorry?
It gives them twenty off from where it was.
Yeah.
From forty-five down to twenty-five, or if you guys want to go twenty, but it knocks it down, you know, dramatically. And it still starts, and as long as it goes into a fund that we're going to.
Start.
A parking.
Start collecting for, for the parking anyhow.
And if the owner wants to pick it up, the cost, because it might be more reasonable for an owner to pick up that cost, they might.
Right, plus they get the tax benefit.
I would, I would hope that the employers think enough of their employees that, you know, that they work hard enough for them, that they might be nice enough to do it.
Depends, I don't know how the business is, they're all struggling, so.
But then again, I mean, you've got those out there that don't care about anybody other than themselves.
So are we going to vote on it tonight, or do you want to postpone it? What do you want to do, Sue?
I think we should put it to the next set of meetings.
That's fine.
You know, to Mark's point, I mean, we pretty much walked out of here Thursday night saying a dollar, a nominal fee. You know, I, you know, I, I think.
So we're pretty much agreed on twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars and postponing it till the next. I still want to walk it tonight. I want to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I'll go with you.
The, the only problem I run into now is.
You're more than happy to take it.
If an employee paid for the parking and is no longer employed, how do we put, can we police something like that? If, if, if they're working for the drugstore, you know, and the economy's bad, either the drugstore let him go, or he quit, whatever the problem is, and he's no longer working, and he's holding that parking spot for two months? How are we, are we going to be able to get the money back? Do we prorate so we can recirculate that?
They're not holding a parking spot. It's not assigned to them, so anyone can park there. What they're holding is a permit registered for their car.
And it's only good for.
And it's only good for that person.
Three months.
For three months. So there's no refunds in this ordinance.
So are we selling more stickers than we have parking spots? Are we overselling?
You, you always oversell a little bit if you can, yeah. That, that's even the case with the number of employees given the number of spots.
So then you just wait for that to become a dead parking issue, then? His, his ticket? I mean, I mean, he leaves for two months. He's still got a valid parking ticket.
It's not a big deal.
The chances are, he's got a job. The chances are he's got a job somewhere else and he's not gonna be using it.
Means he'll be stalking his employer or something.
Yeah.
No, just free parking downtown for the next two months that he can go look for a job.
Everybody else has free parking, so.
Okay, our recommendation is to leave it for twenty-five, we'll put it on the next agenda so that we can get further input from the public, the business, whoever. Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I hope we hear from some other businesses as well, but we'll see.
We need a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
I amend the motion to postpone till October first.
Second?
Pro call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
To clarify on Lincoln Street, Lincoln Street isn't dangerous, what's dangerous are the sidewalks.
The sidewalks.
I have fallen more times than I care to unskin myself, something fierce. But the street is not.
Yeah, it wouldn't be bad in the dark if the sidewalks were smooth.
Yeah, if I had smooth sidewalks, I'd walk it.
Downtown Parking Fund. Would you consider a motion to postpone the establishment of a dedicated Downtown Parking Fund?
So move.
To establish it, but, hey. We decided to postpone it.
I mean, does it matter if we postpone this or vote on this, really? I mean, it's inevitable. We're gonna put something like this into play.
Postpone it to the next set of meetings?
Yeah, I think it should go hand in hand.
That's fine. I'm okay with it.
All right.
So the next set of meetings. You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Whatever.
Oh, real quick. You were gonna check to see if the finance officer, what we could do with this?
Yes, your honor, staff checked with the finance director and, um, I apologize, we were under the incorrect assumption at the last meeting that the dedicated parking fund had to be established as an enterprise fund, which could incur additional audit costs. And in talking with finance director Van Bogut, it was determined that this is not necessary to establish an enterprise fund to meet the intent of this proposal. Such funding could be accomplished as an accounting notation within the confines of the general fund without establishing a totally separate fund and thereby reducing the administration costs. So we will have a, an appropriate board action form for the October first meeting to establish this separate parking fund.
Good.
So you two will make the motion in second to postpone.
Any other comments? Pro call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Amendment to massage establishment ordinance regarding licensing board to consider ordinance adopting amendments to the massage establishment ordinance. You have a motion?
Omo.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Discussion, yes.
Um, I passed out a revised ordinance tonight. And I'm gonna let acting chief Mullhearn go through the revisions. I would like to point out a few preliminary things. And I was hoping to do a quick summary, and I ran out of time. The new changes, which there are only a couple, are single underlined, whereas the original amendments to the ordinance are double underlined, which is still a little hard to differentiate.
Oh, yeah.
We will walk you through them. Page six of the ordinance is where the first change appears. You will note by, with the sections that are included, there are some ellipses in between sections. This is not a complete reprinting of the entire massage establishment licensing ordinance, 'cause it is quite thick. So when our office drafted this, only the provisions that were being amended are included. So to answer trustee Emery's question, which was a good one from Thursday, or, or request that businesses have to conspicuously post the establishment license, that's actually already in the ordinance, it just wasn't in the version that you have, 'cause it wasn't being changed.
It was covered by an ellipse, which trustee Forsley could not explain to me was called an ellipse, but thank you.
I couldn't even say it.
With that intro. Tom, you wanna go through some of the changes?
On Friday, staff met to review five applications, which we're currently going over for massage business licenses. In doing so, we realized that currently the ordinances it reads was, allows only forty-five days in which time there's a completed application to the time I have to get in front of the board to, for your review. Depending on when the board meetings fall, it kinda cuts us down on time. So we would like the board to consider increasing that forty-five days to ninety days. Uh, this is what's similar to a background investigation for a liquor license. And again, there's a back, background personnel as well as fire inspections and building inspections being done, so that was number one. The other thing was, there are four departments with their personnel that are required to, um, report to me for a background, for a check before I can authorize coming before the board for a license, uh, application. And under that time, at that, we were talking about this Friday, that's, the current application fee is two hundred dollars. You have four different departments of the village and their personnel, which is more than that, expending their time. So our consideration, or our question would be, did this board want to consider increasing that fee to whatever you feel would be appropriate? And then I'll let John explain the third change.
And I think one of the recommendations for the fee was to increase it to four hundred dollars?
Currently, two hundred dollars, our recommendation was doubling it to four hundred. Uh, there's two options, you could make it so high as to limit the number of these types of businesses that would come in town. But then, you know, you, I don't think, that's not what we want to, you want to be able to make it affordable to the, as you just had two applicants come in, two, two women who just were coming in, they're single, they're the only employees. They're trying to do a business, offer a service in town. If you made it too high, then I think you would be driving business away from town, and I don't think that's what we want. However, we feel that four hundred dollars, I mean, there are times, there's a building inspector's time, fire inspector's time, detectives' time doing evaluations, you have the clerk's office reviewing the application, you have my time reviewing everything, you have the village manager's time reviewing everything that we submit to him, and then the time here to, in front of the board. So we feel that four hundred dollars is not, um, we'll still, won't cover all our costs, but it would help offset some of the loss.
So.
Anything in process right now would stay under the old fee, correct?
Yes, 'cause they've already paid their two hundred dollars and they would be, that's already accepted. So that would not apply to any, the five applications we are currently doing.
So if I'm reading this, it's four hundred if it's a brand new establishment coming in? And the renewal was fifty and you're looking at a hundred, is it on here, on page ten?
That I don't know, that would've come from the clerk's office.
That's also up to the board. Right now, it's a hundred for the renewal. It was kind of hard to see how, how that change occurred, but, but I would think that. I think it's a hundred now. That should remain the same.
I would see no increase on that.
Well, okay, let's, let's take this, the four hundred dollars, that would be for anyone who say in the future would come in and want to work for an establishment, because we'd have to do a background check on that person, correct?
That's different, we're not regulating the, the therapist, we're regulating the business. So this would be for the massage business license, not so much for the individual person.
What if you have a, an existing hair salon and many of them are putting in a day spa to try to supplement income? Now, they're already in establishment, you know, existing establishment. What do we charge them if they wanna add a massage therapist?
That would be the four hundred dollars, because they are now adding that service, they would need to get a massage business license, that would be the four hundred dollars.
The reason is, it's, you know, it's very detailed, as you, I'm sure know, with the way the rooms have to be set up with separation and bathrooms, does require a pretty detailed building department inspection as well as, you know, we have to do all, all the same work, whether it's an existing business or not.
So in trustee Emery's example, that business then would have to have a minimum of two business licenses?
Their regular business license or whatever they're required for, their beauty salon.
And then an additional license for the service that they'd be providing.
Yes.
Okay, but if they presently have someone there who is licensed as a massage therapist now, and they want to add another person to cover other times, what does that person? You know, what, what would be incurred with the other person being added to the staff as a massage therapist?
Depends on if that business has a massage business license ready. If they have an existing massage business license and are adding additional personnel, it's my understanding there would be no cost. They would have to just go and make sure that they're licensed by the state. We are not licensing each individual, that's one of the reasons for this change. There would be no change, as long as they have a massage business license. But what we're seeing, um, in some of the applications we have now, is that they were doing this business, never had a license. So we're making them, bringing them into compliance, and that's why they would pay the two hundred dollars. However, if someone's adding another employee, nothing if they have a license. If they're a new business, beauty salon, I wanna start offering massages, and I don't have a massage business license, they would have to pay the four hundred dollars.
I don't like the, I don't like doubling the, the fee in this economy. Especially because a lot of the ones that are gonna get hit are already paid, have already paid for a business license as in a, as a different type of establishment.
So you're, you're not doing a background check on the massage person, you're doing it on the business?
The business itself, and then one of the changes which John will mention, we may require, um, a background check on the actual therapist itself. We would like, we recommend that, and I'll let John explain this thing, but, but right now it helps us regulate the type of employees. Uh, one problem could be is that someone would hire or apply and receive a massage business license, and then hire employees that have criminal backgrounds and be a front for something else, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
But focusing on the fee issue, we, we've heard an opinion saying that the, that increase in the fee is too high. The current renewal fee is fifty dollars a year. So it's written in your draft that you could go as high as a hundred dollars a year for the renewal and four hundred for the first time license. Maybe you don't wanna change that at all?
I think for the first time license, I don't think it's a problem. I think it's more of a renewal fee situation, I think is the, I think the concern. I mean, if you've got a new establishment coming in or a new business coming in, I don't, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's part of doing business, I understand it's tough or whatever, but I'm not sure I'd raise the renewal fee at this point in time. I think I'd leave it as fifty dollars at this point. But as far as the investigation fee, if someone new's coming in, has a new business.
There's a lot of background work for that.
Huh?
I mean, does, would the fifty dollars cover our costs?
Just to renew to write out a new license?
If, if that covers our costs, then I would say, let's, that makes sense to me.
And what's it take for us to process a business license?
We have to mail out stuff, you know? It, it's, it takes a couple of months to get everything done.
So if we're, you know, if we can cover our staff time, we just wanna.
Right, I'm not saying.
Meet our expenses, right, you know?
I wanna make money, just break even.
It just, yeah, it's not a, it's just to break even.
I mean, we're not in business to make money here. We're just trying to break even and.
Exactly.
Give people the services that they want, that's all.
I could live with a four hundred and fifty dollar refund, or renewal.
Renewal?
Refund, where the refund?
I don't know refunds.
More refund, no, no, no.
That makes sense, I think that's good.
And the next issue is, it was recommended during Thursday's meeting of putting the limit of the number of allowed establishments at eight. And because of pending applications, staff is recommending that actually be ten, because we had a couple more in the works than was originally communicated to. And those are all in process right now.
When we did our survey of businesses that were not in compliance, that was, what is up to eight? And since then, we received two new applications, which we did not, were, know were going to apply. So we're up, so we have five applications and five current licenses at this time, so it'll be a total of ten.
Two brand new ones?
Two applications, yes, that we did not know were anticipating coming in.
And how many do they have to do?
They'd have to come back before us for the next person that comes in.
Along those lines, on page eight of the ordinance that was passed out, it lists, starting at the top, that the number shall be ten. And then it lists criteria that the board can consider when deciding whether or not to increase the number of allowable licenses. I felt it was important to include that so that you have some rational basis if you choose to deny a license and you're faced with a legal challenge, you have something to look at, um, as opposed to the whim or fancy of the board. And that kind of mirrors, um, what is found in your liquor license ordinance as well. The final change was a question, staff initially wanted to do background checks on the massage therapist. Even though they are licensed exclusively by the state, there was a concern that although the applicant, the applicant for the establishment's license could check out, and although the therapist has a state license, they, we don't know what kind of background checks the state is doing, they still could have some sort of criminal background, et cetera. But in looking at it, it, statute's pretty clear, it's, it's an exclusive function of the state to license, um, the therapist, and they do perform fingerprinting and background checks. We don't know how detailed it is, we don't know if they, upon a renewal, update that. But it clearly limits the home rule power to regulate in that area. And I think we'd be stepping on the state's toes if, if, if the village chose to do that. However, one alternative, if I can find it, is to require the licensed establishment to perform the background check on their own therapist and provide those results to the village. That way, we're not actually doing it, or we're not actually doing the work, the establishment is doing it.
And what criteria are you gonna give them for that?
Simply, I, and Tom, you can explain this probably better than I can, but if you say fingerprint and background check, are they gonna come up with, is, is there a standard?
Anything for, well, crimes that would be the red flags, anything for prostitution, drug use, drug sales.
But who are they gonna use?
They can, um, for, they can do what they do now, what we do now for schools, they can come in and be fingerprinted. A private business can get fingerprints, we would, they would have to come in and be fingerprinted here or someplace else. They submit their fingerprints to the Illinois State Police Bureau of Identification and Joliet. There's a forty-two dollar fee for both state and FBI fingerprints, and the results are sent back to the employer, not back to us.
I think I'd rather have more control over that than letting the employee do it, or the employer doing it.
There is a concern that with the leads program, maybe you can articulate that there than I can.
I cannot run a criminal history check by name only for licensing purposes, it has to be done by fingerprints. There again, too, it also helps us verify who that person is. Similarly, this is done right now with local schools, local schools fingerprint their volunteers, their teachers. What they do is they set up account, similar like we have for the Liquor Control Commission with the state police. Uh, we put money into that account, uh, we can fingerprint the person and that money's automatically deducted. So conceivably, a business could go and start an account with the Illinois State Police, which is allowed by law, uh, and the fingerprints are sent to them, there's, the fees are paid by them. It's not anything a cost that we would incur. The only cost we incur is the fifteen, twenty minutes it takes to fingerprint someone.
So does the state do the background check and the fingerprinting and all that, just on the initial license? Or sort of whatever? Or do they do it every year upon renewal? I mean, who's to say that they couldn't have a clean record when they first get their license? And then five years later, you know, they've got everything that we're saying in the ordinance they can't have, and now we're stuck.
That's our concern.
John, are they even licensed by the state on a, on a, after a criminal background check? Or is it just on their training and?
No, it's fingerprint and a criminal background check, I've, I've got the statute here. However, I'm trying to find out whether, because I don't believe it's an annual background check. I think once they pass the background check and have the minimum hours. It's, they're, right, they're home free. Now, so I guess what prompted this was, um, there's language in there now in, in the ordinance that no establishment shall employ a massage therapist if the therapist has a conviction for prostitution, pandering, drug use possession, distribution, um, or other crimes involving moral perpetuity. Because you could have an applicant that checks out great, yet they have a therapist who somehow passed through the state regulation, but subsequently has, has these convictions on their record. That alone would be grounds for revoking an establishment license. How does the village find out if we can't do our own background checks of the therapist, whether they have this criminal record? Aside from, you know, doing public records checks, but, you know, it gets a little tough. So the idea was to put the burden on the establishment to produce this criminal background check if requested by the village. It wouldn't be required in every situation, um, but certainly if there's suspicion or if we've learned of one arrest of a therapist, we certainly. we've learned of one arrest of a therapist, we certainly could ask them to provide the information. The question is, does that go too far and, and enter the area of regulation of massage therapists in violation of the state statute? I don't know that it does, I think there's a legitimate police power for doing that.
Especially because it's not random, it's, if you have, based on what you just said, it sounds like a good idea, because you'll have a basis upon which to do so. You know, it'll be, you know, we're not just willy-nilly going to require everybody to do annual background checks and go into the, you know, Uber police, but if there's a reason in which to do it, then...
Sounds confusing.
Well, I, I'm just thinking, if we do require it of the therapist that's employed by the business, it's the same situation as the state, because we're only going to do it once, and things could turn up that potentially we could be unaware of. Would we know if there was a drug conviction or something in another community of that? We wouldn't necessarily know that. So we could be in the same situation where we do it, and in theory, they could be home-free.
But you can go back and do it again.
Randomly, or like every, we could say every three years we do it, or every year we're going to do it, or...
You know, certainly, this could run into problems if you're singling out an establishment, and could lead to a constitutional violation claim, and, and that's the fear. I, I think if you're going to actually use this, you want to have a good faith basis for doing so, and you don't want to do it just against one establishment only, or do it repeatedly against one establishment, at least unless you have, you know, some rational basis for doing so. You know, again, this was thrown out there as a suggestion, because I know staff, we had this conference call on Friday morning, really wanted some more teeth in this ordinance, because, you know, Bush wants to have some problems in the past, and other communities are routinely having problems with this, and they want a way to combat it.
Do you ask the, and to do it every three years? Everybody? And their employees?
You can.
As per as their...
Well, I mean, the thing is, if, if you have somebody that comes in, and they apply for a massage therapist or a massage establishment, and they've already passed state muster, who's to say that they didn't get closed down another village or even another state, and they've come here, or whatever, and that one time shot through there, it's, it's not going to show up they have their license, so in order to find that out, you're almost going to have to do this.
I mean, it's unfortunate that there is, there's a good amount of abuse in this field, so, you know, we have to be diligent.
Right.
Which makes it hard for the legitimate businesses, but, you know, we have to move forward with caution, too.
I mean, if we could set a timeframe on how often it needs to be done...
Every three years makes sense.
Yeah.
What's the school time? Isn't that three? Don't, don't, I, I'm trying to think when the volunteers...
I believe they're only done once.
I thought there was a timeframe on that. Maybe not, I...
I think it's only done once, I, they'd never come back for repeat performances. One thing also, too, with the liquor, and I don't know if it's true with the massage license, and I have to check with the state police, is that once I fingerprint somebody for a liquor license, if they have a liquor-related offense, after that, I receive a notice from, for, state police that that person's arrested for liquor-related offense. I don't know if that occurs for licensing purposes. We could check, but then again, what's the, what's their parameters and criteria that they notify the, the fingerprinting person? Don't know.
So we want to add the requirement, every three years?
All establishments shall, shall submit background check information on their employees once every three years.
Their massage therapist employees, because they might have a lot of other kinds.
Or independent contractors, and there's some language about that already.
So then, administratively, we would have to track that, so that when we send them that year-three license renewal, we say, oh, by the way, it's time for your background checks. So there's work to be done in administration.
There are different types, I mean, they can do a background check by name only, that might be a consideration, because once we have the fingerprints, we know there's, we know who that person's identity is. If they could verify who they are by a name check only, we may be able to do that, which is a lot cheaper to the employer than it is by fingerprints. I believe the name check is only ten dollars, whereas the fingerprints would be thirty-five or forty dollars for each employee every year, could get cost like...
You think a name check would be sufficient?
They can go to the state police and just, there is a way to do a name check, only I believe it's ten to twelve dollars.
And that would be sufficient for, you know, that would give you enough information to have...
I'd have to double-check on that, but I, I believe so, yes.
Okay. That'd be fine.
I think Deputy King has it.
Just, I'm saying this, on the name check, normally, I have to answer a question, normally, it's not enough information, but if they're fingerprinted that first time, we have that name with those fingerprints. So if the name check is submitted for three or a new...
Oh, you already have the prints?
And names got to match what was done at fingerprints. So when you do name check just by name, and you don't have anything to base it on that, is correct, but we would have that first fingerprint application with that name on it, so that name check would have to match that first application.
Maybe the renewals would be by name check only, the original background check, the initial background check, the time of hire has to be by fingerprint.
That works.
At any time renewal after that could be by name check only.
And then they would have to match the fingerprint check.
And that's less expensive for the employer?
Yes.
Significantly, yes.
So the original one would be a full fingerprint, but the...
Correct.
Well, they got that, though, when they got their massage license, right? So they would...
When they got their massage therapist license from the state, yes. But when they got their massage business license, the business owner is the one that's only one that's fingerprinting.
So, are we saying we would, are we saying we would repeat that? And even though they've been through it once with the state, when they set up shop here in Westmont, and they're going to work here in Westmont, we're going to make them do that again with the full prints?
Full fingerprints will be their first initial license...
Or their first one.
And their first, you know, employee, or first-time employee in Westmont, but as you're talking on their renewal, every three years...
And then the renewal would be the name?
Their renewal would be, could be by name only by the, by the, provided they, they show proof that the person they ran by name is still the same person.
Okay. That works.
So when they add a new therapist in the middle of the year, they have to do that initial checkup, and the fee will be for adding from going from one to two?
There's no fee that the village charges simply because they add or subtract therapists. The fee will be to the business for having to do their own background, criminal background check on their own employees. They're going to hire a new employee, they're going to have to do a criminal background check, submit that information to the village, say, here you go, by the way, we've got a new employee. Because the ordinance already requires them to maintain information about their employees that the village can, can examine upon request. Now, we're just requiring this background check.
So, do we do our business licenses on a calendar year, or, how do we do that? Is the first one like less than twelve months, and subsequent ones are always twelve months?
Calendar.
So if we're going to do this background check every three years, we could end up requiring that at a time when their license isn't due, to the mayor's point, if they start mid-year. So maybe we need to word that some way that upon the third yearly license renewal or some, I don't know, you're the attorney.
Along with the third, every three-year license renewal, they'll do this. It doesn't have any, without regard to hire dates.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We, we probably just have to say that.
Every third year of the license renewal.
Of the renewal.
Who polices this? Our police department or our clerk's office?
Well, the licensing...
Well, the licensing, we do.
Licensing as a clerk, but...
Liquor commissioner.
We do the, the, one more thing.
I'm sure they have an excellent checklist that they have to check off when they do the renewals. One of the checklist items now will have to be criminal background check provided by applicant.
Okay.
In order to renew their license, they're going to have to provide that information, and if not, they'll send out the reminder letter, and then if the police department has to get involved...
It's currently, as I, well, the only thing I agree with would be the liquor license, Steve Penzek does a great job, and he goes through all those. If they don't have everything that they're required, they don't get their new liquor license. And he wouldn't notify me until it's to the point of the license is expiring. So I would imagine in this case, he would police it, he does it now on the applications, now we make sure everything is done on the application when it's submitted. He doesn't forward it to me until everything is complete. So I'm sure on that, he would not issue a license until they complied with the law.
Any more recommended changes? Oh, you got, you got that, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay, unless there are any more questions, roll call. Please, on this item.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Westmont High School Homecoming Parade. Board to consider approval of the following request. Motion to approve street closures and pre-parade staging on public property for the Westmont Homecoming Parade on September twenty-fourth between six-thirty and seven PM on CAS from Burlington to Naperville, and east on Burlington Avenue from Linden to CAS. And B, ordinance granting a waiver of section forty-two dash one-fifty-two of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to allow an outdoor bonfire at the Westmont High School following the homecoming parade.
Motion to approve paragraph A.
Second.
Comment on point A. Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Point B.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Next item, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October two thousand and nine. Board to consider approval of a proclamation designating, designating October two thousand and nine as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Village of Westmont.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Constitution Week, September seventeenth to the twenty-third. Board to consider approving a proclamation designating September seventeenth to twenty-three as Constitution Week.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Ad-hoc Finance Committee. Board to consider an ordinance establishing an ad-hoc finance committee, whose mission will be to assess longer-term village finances, looking at both trends in revenue as well as expenditures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Finance ordinance number ten.
We have before us on this twenty-first day of September two thousand and nine, a finance ordinance in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.